The City of Harpsville Fiscal Year twenty-three, twenty-four draft budget review workshop and specialty of Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. Um, getting right to it, um, we'll start off, uh, I would invite you to stand for our invitation and pledge.
Yes, Greg. What's that? And, um, non, 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 non. Father, thank you for another beautiful day, and you and I will still assemble as your humble stewards of this city of Harpsville that we all love so much. Father, thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your loving kindness that you show to us anew and fresh every morning. Father, we want to ask you now to embody in your Holy Spirit, Lord. Lead us, guide us, give us direction for our protection, Lord, and the revelations that we need for the city of Harpsville for it to move, grow forward, and go forward together. Now, Lord, as we come to do this here, this business, we ask you a special request, Lord, for your favor on our budget process as we go through it, Lord. Help us make all the right decisions that we need to make, and help us to do everything that is right and good, that is just and fair for the sections, every section, and every service in the city of Harpsville. In all the presence, we have the name of Jesus Christ to be blessed. Amen.
For the allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, we are a nation under God and in the rightful order of the Lord.
And I'm asking, I was thinking, you know, to go, Greg, because I would like for council members to, um...
Please, thanks for a reminder.
All right.
Do you need me to, um, to, uh, 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 uh? I had it in front of me last time, still sort of... There's one pointed out, so...
Since we made the paper and we all took the book and came on it, I really want us to...
All right.
...be mindful of that.
Excellent.
All right.
Have created a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civic engagement, respecting others' shared desires, and finding solutions for the development of my city over time.
Um, if, uh, there's no agenda items, did we have any comments in the public, anybody to address or comments or anything? And also wanted to say thank you all, staff and public, for being here today. Okay, I'll move right on to President.
Uh, thank you all for joining us in the proposed budget. We have in front of you, um, positive and powerful citizens of council, and of course, we have a hundred and eighty-five. I do have a first announcement. Um, we were, found out last night that of the one point three billion dollars that was awarded, was due down by the state. City Harpsville received its largest ever grant ever, which is nine million dollars worth for our construction, for the plan. This is... So, we applied for this, it was a highly competitive application. Um, there were three hundred and nine applications, only two hundred and eighteen were awarded, and honestly, we got our full amount requested. This is huge for the city of Harpsville, and this takes us into the future for the next twenty-five to thirty years as far as wastewater and water are concerned. The most notable projects, of course, are wastewater treatment and expansion. As most of you know, we have industrial customers that do service, and this was reaching, so we have all alligator rule coming to us, Matthews coming to us, it allows us to expand. This is huge for us to come here, we're getting closer to it. And then also, the most notable is going to be our new water tank that is eighty-eight years old, the one that's out this street, it's the egg-shaped tank. Eighty-eight years old, it's time to retire the old girl. She has served us well, but it's time. And so, along with this, this is again, as I said, the largest grant we've ever received by multitudes of about eight million dollars. Um, so we, I want to thank all the staff who put all the hard work into this, and I want to thank you guys because this did require a one million dollar match. Uh, we did receive a five hundred thousand dollar match from the rural infrastructure authority, so that lowered our obligation by five hundred thousand dollars. And again, we do this, all of this without a single tax increase to the citizens, it's purely through federal stimulus money, so this sets us up, um, for years, years. This is huge right now, so we're very excited about this, we were anxiously excited, there was a workshop, May thirty-first will be attended, and after that, it's fall to the races because it's going to be a map house, getting contractors, but we're ready for the challenge.
Okay, I want to say, uh, kudos to union staff, uh, I just finished, uh, working at EP Quaint with, uh, Valhalla Foundation. I don't want to do it again. That's a lot of work, so kudos to the union staff.
All right, thank you.
So, so my, my, um, we're, I love you, my son is... Yep, yep. It's ours. You're, you're it's ours.
Um, really, I mean, just to really highlight, Chastity Jenkins and Philip Faye really wants to spearhead this with staff, they should just leave it there. Also, um, I know Jason isn't here, but Lindsay Prue with the COF was also instrumental, I believe, with a hundred and ten million dollars that was awarded to the PD area loan. Lindsay helped with forty-nine million, uh, so congratulations to her, thank you for her, she's done. But this is, as you can see, this is the, for those, but it's forty-seven page grant, and, uh, we will be, you know, announcing this later on today, the study will be done, the timeline, what's we doing, and what we're going to get.
Forty-seven pages, that's almost as long as your profile.
My PowerPoint is a hair longer, um, I won't compare that, you know.
There's that more picture.
Mine has more pictures, although theirs has quite a bit of pictures, but, you know. Um, in addition, we're also relocating to rehabbing two pump stations that are older, um, and then the main upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant. Yeah, add capacity, which as you guys know, we're reaching seventy percent capacity limit, at seventy percent, we need to be in design, so we're going to... So, this is, the guy can't emphasize how huge this sets us up for the next thirty-plus years. So, and I do want to give a shout out to Senator Lloyd, he was part of this process with us, um, without our local representatives, we, he really helped us along the way, and we have more exciting stuff coming up. Can we start off?
Yeah, anybody from cities in our, or other country, or...
Yes, Cody Mitchell, oh, yeah, and, um...
He's for two fifty, but, um, article, uh, state now.
South Carolina, I mean, it's one point two million, billion dollars of infrastructure being put into the state, it's huge. This is a big, and everybody, our local partners as well, so it's exciting. All right, so as far as the, uh, getting right to the proposed budget, um, I am going to be covering the budget highlights and capital requests first, I thought that was a little better last year instead of mixing in with all their budgets. We will be able to talk about it with each, um, expenditure through the narrative, but, uh, that's for the general fund, enterprise funds, sanitation fund, and all other funds we'll go through there. First one I want to talk about is the classification compensation study, this is a rather lengthy conversation, but I want to give you guys a heads up of what's going on, we're on page, we're on page four. So, last year, we budgeted for a classification compensation study, um, we should be done regularly, it's a way for cities and entities to make sure they're competitive with pay, across state, because our most valuable commodity, that we have anything, even though we just got ten million dollars in grants, is our staff and our things, we can't do the work without them. So, it had been about twenty years since we had done our study, uh, compensation study, Archer did it twenty years ago, they've been in the business for quite some time, I think it was eighty-eight or eighty-five. But essentially, this was a six-month process, um, we had employee meetings, there were the first amendment of every employee, uh, we had, uh, kind of questionnaires and surveys that every employee filled out about their positions, and then we compared it against local entities that matched us, and also with the private market, and then we compared that to our cost of living analysis to figure out what we needed first, and then we applied the cost of the COLA, or the classification compensation on top of it. I'm going to call it the class of compensation COLA for short, you see, and classification compensation and COLA is cost of living adjustment. So first, this is our cost of living analysis as we've been looking at, as you can see, we have had to keep up with inflation pretty heavily, so, you know, we appreciate city council really taking an interest in this. Historically, as you can see from the chart, which shows eighteen, we've always done about two percent in, um, COLA, we noticed in twenty-twenty-two that that was not keeping up with the job, just so to speak. In twenty-twenty-three, we actually did three point five percent COLA, and in August of twenty-twenty-two, we had to do an emergency, essentially, COLA, and also a spot adjustment for our police officers to make sure that we were keeping the talent we have already. This year, we are recommending a five percent COLA, that is right below what Archer had recommended, they just recommended a five point six, we felt five was affordable for the city along with the COLA and class of comp. Uh, it's still, if you look at the federal Bureau of Planning and Growth statistics that we use, even with a very rosy projection like given for our CPI for twenty-twenty-four, two point seven-three, it will put us negative three point nine four percent still behind the CPI, that's really actually outstanding compared to the rest of the cities around us, um, some entities are in the twenties below. This all factored into the classification compensation study, um, so I'm going to spend some time in this chart, explain what's going on, uh, I'm going to use my handy daily pointer. Uh, these are the cities we compared ourselves against, again, this is who responded to the survey, um, Archer handled this for us, Camden, Casey, Darlington, Florence, Lancaster, T V K, Lexington, and Cavies for Florence and Darlington. We also did compare some jobs to the private sector, but that's, you know, not always apples to apples. The new grade that was established with this class of compensation study that we're, um, suggesting, was grade six through forty-three. It was a, starting at twenty-six, eighty-eight, eight-four-eight as the lowest paid, and then it went up to grade forty-three, ninety-seven, nine-twenty-three, and then these have minimums, midpoints, and maximums, and just to explain that, the goal is by about forty years to five years, you reach your midpoint, if you are going successfully through, or through the kind of adjustment period. Something that we're introducing here, and we really, um, this was talked about last year a lot, is introduction of a liberal wage for employees. Um, this was a big undertaking, it took a lot of analysis to see what's going on, Archer, uh, looked at what the minimum wage, or sorry, the, uh, average minimum wage is going to be for this area, that's thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollars. So that we, what we did is we raised the floor for our lowest paid employees in twenty-seventy, forty-eight, which is going to be your labors and things like that, to a thirty-two thousand. We then weighted it closer to the people who are underneath the fifty thousand dollar range, so that instead of it affecting the higher paid employees, it affected lower paid employees more. So the new floor became this for those employees, and then it followed up to this. The classification compensation then took a look at what the COLA was introduced at five percent, and then took every employee that did not meet the new minimum and brought them up to that level. So that is what this came out with. These are all of our positions and different people, they all make up, every employee is represented here, and this was the increases to every single employee by COLA and by class of compensation. The total salary increase was four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars to the budget, but with benefits, and benefits are mixed back because some employees have full family, and that costs the city about fifteen grand to pay for, whereas a single employee will cost about six thousand dollars to pay for so. That's all factored in, that's the true number, but we're actually adding to our budget, eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, two hundred forty dollars. The interesting thing here, just to, for information, is that the class of comp, if we could not introduce the COLA, would meet the difference here, relatively so. So, as we lowered the class of comp, or COLA number, the class of comp raised, it just kind of made sense, so we decided to tackle the CPI first, and see where the class of comp fell afterwards. All in all, as I said, that's an eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollar increase, on average, we had about five hundred thousand dollars per year for our salaries, so this was an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars to the budget overall, and that's purely that one sixty-two plus benefits.
Do we have an idea, or maybe on another chart, about how many employees at each level?
Yes, um, I, I'll pull that number for you, um, the main thing to see here is that this is how the grades reach effective, as you can see, the grade six, that's our liberal wage increase right there, so huge increase to them. It does factor in, um, these are our firefighters, police officers, sanitation workers, um, and then you get up to around middle management, and then there are some spot adjustments for, uh, positions that, again, looking at the market, they were not being paid appropriately, but really, only that's one director position, everything else was not covered, but the line shares down here, and that's what this chart represents. The, you see the line going down, streets and grounds, parks and majors, marketing and sanitation. The caveat here is police, police would have been hired, but last year, if you recall, and that's a, I'm going to get back to that in a second, but last year, as you recall, um, we did a ten percent increase for sergeants and below. So that would have been in here if we hadn't done that already, so they got the spot adjustment ahead of time, and then there was an additional adjustment for police after that. And that blew us the five percent COLA just on top of all that. This is that hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, how that breaks out per department, as you can see, streets and grounds, fire operations, utilities, sanitation, and police over line share, who's getting this money? And that's how we intend it, that's what we thought was going to come out with the class of compensation, so what does this do for real numbers? So, this is what it looked like when we first started, now this is the two percent COLA, I took, um, three highlighted positions here that were hard to fill positions for, it's hard to keep. You have a police officer, firefighter, heavy equipment operators, and these are C D L drivers, your base firefighters, of course, the police officers coming in. When I first started in twenty-twenty, I believe, with the police officers, around thirty-three thousand dollars a year, that was their pay, firefighter was a thirty-three, and public services was less, these were two percent COLAs for about three hundred each. We did a quick analysis of what each entity around us just will be defined at the time, and you can see how we were relatively low on the pay scale for all these positions. This is represented for a lot of our businesses across the board, even though we'd be keeping the COLA, there was huge increases. The biggest one for police, if you look every year, that's fifty thousand dollars and then forty-nine thousand dollars, that was a huge increase the state did, uh, a couple of years ago, where they absorbed a lot of positions that couldn't be filled into the jail system, they were actually working double shifts and whatnot, and they increased and raised the bar for airline. That really set into motion all of this, which is a good thing, it really made us take a look at what we're paying our employees, and our police and firefighters specifically for public safety, as well as public services employees, critical positions, and it prompted us to take action. So, in August of twenty-twenty-two, this now is just a big little front. Sir, come on, that's... In August of twenty-two, we proposed this to city council, again, a ten percent increase to, um, select positions across the board, which is sergeants and below, a three percent COLA, uh, for all staff, so that was with that three point five plus of three percent to get to six point five percent. And then, of course, a twenty-five thousand dollar budget item for a class of compensation study, which is what we're talking about now. This is where we are now, with the class of comp and the COLA on top of it. Police is within competitive range to Florence and Florence County, which is our hugest, biggest competitor, and Florence is four times our size, so we are competing now with the city four times our size versus, you know, a lot of things that were right and, you know, shot of what Lancaster and South Carolina and Florida did. Heavy equipment operators and police fare very well as well, um, they are now the highest paid in the area based on our studies. This is huge for, this is huge for everything, this is just applying that blanket five percent and blanket COLA across the board, so it's not, they're doing any real favoritism across the board, and it's showing a huge increase, so this is going to be a recruitment to departments and employees, we're doing the work. Again, and I wanted to re emphasize the wage increase, it's another sixty percent increase for employees down there, so that's on those, on those, for instance. So, that is what we're proposing, um, we're very excited about this, and it is, really shows that we're going to take a huge commitment to our employees.
And I think, you know, looking at it, with, you know, our comparable cities and counties, you can really see the difference between the head equipment operator and firefighters, and within, um, just a, a smidgen of police officers, so...
Well, we're, we're, we're committing, I mean, this is competitive market, and it's competitive for heavy equipment operators, for firefighters, um, we have to remain competitive, we have to show ourselves and regain the pay. I think the fire, you know, police, uh, I think it does have some room to grow, um, but police, that is, um, a huge increase from where we were to start.
Well, there, and something adds recently, like city motivation places, you know, actively recruiting.
Yeah, well, everyone's trying to, everyone's trying to, um, you know, get the same from the same pool, which, shockingly, as many people, maybe not surprised, less and less people are becoming officers. Less and less people are getting the firefighters, I mean, we have, uh, the volunteer, it's a struggle to maintain volunteers, and that's typically been our feature program. And then heavy equipment operators, a C D L driver is a hot commodity, and you can make a lot of money driving on the road, now, we, I think we offer a lot more in terms of culture, and, you know, in addition to this, which is not represented here, we're the only city that does pretty much guarantee a COLA, but we also guarantee a, the Christmas bonus, we also guarantee a merit bonus, we also get three more vacation, paid vacation days in the other area, so that will go into our marketing for this area, so, um, this is huge for us. It really does impact, and as I, as I showed in the previous chart, it's impacting the lower paid jobs, what we need, and so, I mean, the last three years have increased salaries, I mean, for police, it's almost a ten thousand dollar increase to pay, that's huge. Or any questions about this, we are going to be diving into each department as we talk, but any questions about the class of comp?
That's great, shining on the police, very, very, and service.
These are the, um, every employee in public services, police, fighters, and back end organization, officials who are, and not even representing, I picked these three positions, but all of our positions should be elevated because planning, zoning, our people down in Pagan Water Payments, all of them are part of this organization, they all deserve to be compensated fairly, in my opinion. Okay? All right, I'm going to move on to capital. All right, yes, there are gifts in here, so just enjoy, that's a police officer, baby. So, this is also the largest cap, one of the largest capital requests we've done, again, as Mayor, you said, in your state city, it's time to invest back, and so, we are looking at a huge, um, capital request this year, and I believe we'll show as we look through revenues, that revenues are, are completely unjustifiable to the increase for its revenue. The breakdown for this is seven new police vehicles, um, and in addition to that, we, this is something we have to do, a mobile video recording software, our stuff is outdated, um, this is the stuff that is recorded from our police cars, the news, the dash cameras are so important for protection of our citizens and our police officers, um, this will link with our body cameras, the same company, so that you have, actually, you eliminate that extra piece of equipment, we used to have to carry a microphone on our shoulders, shoulders that handle the door, the dash camera, now it'll be all handled simultaneously. And one less video flying off when they, um, when they go running after somebody. Uh, in addition to this, another huge win for us, again, we fought so hard to get that fire contract, this is a new fire, a new fire, well, for so long, the fire cha- contract that was not where, twenty fifteen has been debunked or defunct. And so, they said we couldn't, people said we couldn't redo it, we redid it, and as a result, we have a brand new fire engine coming to us, a one point two million dollar purchase, we have to capital lease out five hundred twenty-six thousand, that's about sixty, forty split, leaving fifty-five, forty-five, um, so that is for fire. The parks and recreation, this is part of a larger system that we're working on, so the lights for our fields need to be operated, but one of the first things we need to be able to do is control them better, right now, it's all manually based, and so, when you have an evening practice, a staff member had to drive back out and turn them off. And so, when you have a set till ten o'clock at night, sometimes I prefer my staff to go home at night, so this is just a timer that's going to be able to link up to all, we can connect to a phone. This is part of a larger project, a one point five to one point eight million dollar application, we're looking to take funding through grants for new lights in the entire complex for buyer, we're bringing it up to twenty-twenty-three for sports related activities. This is... The cost savings will be huge, um, we, we're going to be looking to go to LEDs, right now, they're before us, which are, you know, only sort of goodies, um, but they're extremely expensive, so, um, that is coming up, we're looking for funding for that, it's active, it's next year, but this is the typical guy for recreation. And then next, uh, for streets and grounds, which, all those public services is in the general fund, uh, tractor, because we were using utility tractor, and they're using it at their, what, essentially at their mercy, when they need to do something, and utilities uses it back a lot, so this will give them the piece of equipment they need so they can do their own equipment. Next, we have, that's the one, um, next, we're going to flip to the enterprise fund and sanitation fund, again, different pots of money. Enterprise fund is your water sewer Neptune Island, uh, within the water sewer side, we are looking to addition to that nine million dollars that we're looking at doing, we also need to do some pipe bursting down Wilson Drive, staff requested this because they have a lot of issues on this pipe system. Also, a pump replacement for, I think that's the Black Creek, Black Creek lift station, and then also do square push camera, and then for the water park, uh, this is something we've talked about for quite some time, uh, it's time to look at Piratesville. Piratesville is ten years old, uh, they just start to show its age, so the pumps are difficult to get replaced or repair now, so we're looking at a four thousand dollar revitalization of that splash pad. The exciting part about this is if we redesign it, we can continue to make it even more handicap accessible, we'll need more all play, to really bring in a lot more kids and players in that area, and also opens up opportunities for us to use the splash pad longer because it doesn't require the light parts that Neptune Island would need. And then, um, there is another two hundred thousand dollars we will talk about renovations, that's going to be our slide towers, our lazy river needs to be rehabbed, it's six years old, it needs to have some, it has a lifetime warranty on the liner, which is in there, but if anyone's been in there, you might have felt those folds and those little wrinkles in there, that's to fix those. And then there's a couple other things in there, the walkways show some age, so we need to get some more stuff, we will dive into that as we go through the expenditures, we talk about it. And then finally, um, in solid waste capital outlet, um, the solid waste fund fund date, we are requesting a rear loader, and these have gone up in price since I used to do the sanitation business, I used to be able to buy one for about two twenty, another three twenty. Um, so this is a new rear loader, um, there is justification, we were doing that in enterprise on description, but basically, we have old trucks, and we get some new ones. So, this is really hitting every area across the city for capitals, two point four million dollars, when we get to the sanitation side, Johnny, I made a request to talk about, the leaf back truck, we'll talk about that as well, that's about, we'll talk about that as well.
All right, what would, um, what would the timeline, I know it depends on contractors, timeline, do you for Wilson Drive and the splash?
So, the, uh, Wilson Drive is a lot easier, if there are contractors, the town can do that relatively easily, for example?
I wouldn't say relatively easily, but, I mean, we do have access to a lot of different ones, and we're working on ways to address that situation, depending upon, I guess, the day in, in general of what we've done to rehab out there already, but it's going to continue to be an issue if it's not ready.
Yeah, and the splash pad, we, what we do is we would, we would go through this whole season, and then begin working, we have the season end, and have it ready for next season.
Awesome. That's all, that's all.
Um, while we're out on Friday, we notice some houses, uh, trash and debris that we should not pick up, and right now, we do not have equipment that's able to pick that up, we'll be discussing that, and, uh...
So, let's utilize your knuckle boots better, it's, there's illegal dumping sites that we're going through, um, we're just now with codes and whatnot, and, yes?
Well, the D O T has contracted, um, with a third party to start doing litter pickup, and since I used to work there, I have a good relationship with the R and M in Darlington County, so a part of that situation, he allows for me to approve up to three roadway miles to have litter pick up throughout the city, so each month, I get sent a request, and I provide a list of roadways for litter pickup, and so, based on that Friday, seeing some of the areas that we were not able to get to, I'm going to add to those lists, if you notice, Sixth Street was a little bit cleaner, probably than everybody thought, partly because that was one of the first streets that I had on the list for the D O T pickup, but moving forward, there'll be some additional roads, and if you have any requests, I mean, you can give them to Daniel, and Daniel can provide them to me, and each month, I provide that to Department of Transportation for their litter pickup services.
Superbowl.
And as, and as you said, with the leak system, we've actually had more time to pick up, the new leak back system, or leaks, not back system, leak pickup system, we've had more time to pick up, three as well.
On code enforcement side of that, um, you have to let landlords and property owners know, um, about that illegal dumping, and put the fines in there for that. Because it's, um, just take, for instance, um, I'm coming home last night, and there's a set house that they've been working on for property that we can have, and, and a row sitting up there beside the road, so that's what people think they're supposed to do, and we are going to have to let them know, um, that is not the way, and there's a price to pay for that.
That was on Eighth Street.
I saw some Jasper's, I remember, perhaps, I had, and all that.
They have down at Fifth Street on the road again, it's going to serve the church for seven fairs, and that airbag, they don't, it's just... Well, it's something that we have to make, we're not going to tolerate.
Well, and, you know, code is now moving, it has more support with the fire department, so we're able to do that, there's more eyes on the streets doing it. Um, I did want to go, so we talked about capital fees again, too. Um, I did want to go, so we talked about capital leases, two point four million dollars, how do we pay for it? Um, this is a breakdown of where we've been since twenty seventeen, and what we're suggesting, this is a five hundred thousand dollar increase to our, uh, spending, and that's the debt per tick. As you can see, we are going down from here, much lower trajectory than we've had then, and just to reiterate, that nine million dollars, I missed it, we got nine million dollars from this kind of credit. So, that's gonna alleviate some of the debt burden that we have to take on ourselves, for instance, the water tank, we've got two million dollars debt, we have to take on ourselves, but we got that. So, this is what we're looking at, um, again, our revenues, as we'll go through in just a minute, who really supports it, so that's what we're asking all that. And just to reiterate, that is five thousand dollars across all funds. So, really, the impacts to the funds are, general funds, thirty thousand dollars, enterprise is one point, it's one hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, and seventy-three thousand dollars, so those are the payments we split across all funds, so that's how that works out.
And sorry, more than, as a quick reminder, with the capital leases this current year, we wouldn't have that debt payment, right? So, the capital lease proceeds are the offset for the revenue, and then that five hundred thousand y'all saw, but starting this will be your twenty twenty-five.
And we have stuff rolling off as we go.
That's right.
So, we, in fact, we have something rolling off in twenty twenty-six immediately, so that's how this debt schedule works. So, again, we, we feel very comfortable going after these items.
We have to look at those, under that schedule. Oh, yeah, during the back of the
Okay.
And, and when we do that, does that, um, you know, tax payers not, anymore tax?
Yes. Um, and we'll go over what the revenues are doing, and that's, that's, you guys will find out that maybe we're doing quite well, um, which is, which is really indicative, really exciting, so.
That increasing tax.
Without increasing taxes all, so, now I'm gonna move into, um, my third part, which is, what's my second third part? This is the revenue side, my favorite suspended side. So, this is what we want to talk about, so here is a breakdown, uh, these are actual audit numbers of our revenues. Um, this is general fund only, so this is not the water sewer or utility in Neptune Island. As you can see, um, we did have a, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, um, revenues were a little lower than expenditures, but then, beginning in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, consistently, we have shown progress and growth across the board in all of our areas. Um, and this is, again, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, two, we haven't finished twenty twenty-three fiscal year yet.
One thing I do want to point out is twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, you see, don't, don't let that concern you that it's slightly lower, it's because that includes a large capital lease proceeds we did that year, so that's why that's higher.
There's a slight bump here, versus here, you'll see that across the board.
Your capital lease proceeds are a revenue.
And I'll explain the capital lease proceeds when we get to the other side, but basically, it's this chart. This year alone is a two point two million dollar increase to general fund. Now, one point two of that is capital lease proceeds, but that means that one million dollars is growth, and that's growth that we've experienced without raising taxes. And that's year over year, we keep experiencing this, and these are the areas, these are some of the areas that we're really experiencing the most growth. Again, local option, sales tax, that's the money we get back to the state, uh, that continues to be the cash, um, increase for us, it's a fourteen percent increase, licenses increase as well, business licenses. Uh, we had twenty-two business licenses just last month, um, I mean, all those burger joints paying for our, paying ahead, that's what's paying for our growth right now, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, a fourteen, eleven percent increase. Along the same growth we're experiencing utilities as well as the general fund, we're able to transfer more in using our formulas back from the utilities fund. And hospitality, which is a true indicator of their success and the, um, strength of the economy, is also increasing, so that means we're also transferring the monies. If you go to your chart on page, your narrative, to page twelve, um, that explains all of our growths that go across the area. Taxes, which is typically not a huge increase for us, increased by sixty thousand dollars, that's almost, it's about two point two mils, without having to raise taxes. We're also experiencing growth in our, um, motor vehicle tax, which I guess people are buying more vehicles, which is fantastic, um, in the motor carriers, but then also, um, Duke increased all their costs, which you guys might have noticed your power bill went up. We get money back for that, so that's our franchise fee, so that's the increase, and then across the areas, so all in all, it is a sizable increase to our budget, which we're very excited about.
I think your Also indicative of Oh, so that's the penny On every slail in
And hospitality, as you know, is two percent on top of prepared foods. That's true, that's true, burgers as well. So it's very exciting to see that we are experiencing growth without any impact and, um, increase for tax purposes. Any questions about that?
That's the exciting part.
I like spending, though. Yeah, no, this is, this is just general fund, um, the city is continuing to grow, and as you see in other charts, um, going forward, we are experiencing growth, and it's not stagnant. Our population, although, again, we saw the population things from the census, no one believes that census, um, if you look at our housing and how it's filling up, I mean, they're built five houses over, um, was it, they wrote some division? They've already sold one, it hasn't even finished building, so it's, it's very exciting. This is a breakdown of our general fund revenues, it's either blind sharing is taxes, that does include that loss, but also our, um, uh, uh, property taxes, and licensing permits continues to be increased. The goal, and this is my personal goal, when you start looking at economic development, is to make sure this continues to eat into be a bigger share, because that's where the growth happens, and that means you don't take these taxes. Alright, that is revenues, any questions about that for general fund alone?
I would just say that, well, we talk about our property taxes, and they're going up, and we're not increasing meals, when I think back to the math of that, and how that's happening, it'd be because we're continuing to see an increase in our tax assessments, right?
Yeah.
So, we're continuing to see that grow without increasing our meal, just because our tax assessments are going up, right, so the property values are going up, which is always a great thing, um, for everyone that lives here. So, I just wanted to point that out, we are increasing the meals, but we did continue to see growth in our taxes.
Just a clear question, I, um, see that very, just on the license, uh, you said, the license, we said in three years, people are applying for
People are applying for more businesses starting.
We go back to
So, in front of this, when you see like a disco bill coming in, that's an additional revenue to us, um, but also, sales are going up, which is also across the board, that addition, it helps with our thing. If you look at our, you guys have in your packet, a three-year analysis for revenues, um, to look at that, look at your business license, and you start seeing how, I believe, we pull up
That's a good question, that's not as adjusted fee.
Absolutely, make that greater.
Absolutely, no, that would be, that would be two factors, that would be growth, the business is coming, and then the other part of that would be it's a calculation based off of your gross revenues, so an increased gross revenues would equate to a larger business license, because it's a percentage of your gross revenues.
So, when we first started, and this is going back to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, business license revenue, I'm on, this is on the three-year analysis, page three. Business license revenue is at one point, Johnny, this year, we're projecting, we get into the expenditures, or revenues rather, two point three seven, so we're looking at four thousand dollar increases since twenty nineteen, so that's, that is growth, pure growth, without having to raise any taxes, we do like to put that. Okay? Any other questions about revenues? Alright, let's get into expenditures then. Alright, so, general fund, just a reminder, that is everything in general fund, but this is a cost breakdown for what our, um, how it's broken out, as you can see, again, the line shares public safety. The next thing is our support services, which is general, um, government, venture IT, human resources, me, um, finance, everything like that, taken away, it's all works together in conjunction. So, for this part, if you guys just want to follow along, if you have any questions, my plan is to go through each fund by name, by number of each department in the general fund, excuse me, thank you, I'm CFO. And it starts with the general fund for expenditures on page twenty-two. Alright? So this is, this is fund four-ten, four-sixteen, this is gonna be your general, they administrate your legal department. What I'm gonna do is just, I'm gonna highlight some things, but if you guys have any questions, the council will just help me know. So we do have a few things in here to highlight, uh, one, we do have a contingency plan for here, a forty-two thousand dollar contingency, that is just money that has not been allocated at this point, last year, fifty thousand. So we're very, we're pleased to get to that point. Again, we have some minuses here, um, across the board, from the rental, the rent of the key, for instance, and also the monies, uh, for Park Hall Development Corporation are being shifted to pay for the general obligation bond, we'll talk about a little bit. A big factor here that is in this fund is special projects and services, that's, um, fund four-ten, uh, fund Department four-ten, seven thirty-five, we are designing for a new public safety complex, so this is a thirty thousand dollar expenditure, um, the plan is to put it, design it for that location on the corner. As we've said multiple times, a public safety building at that spot would help with economic development, help extend downtown, using public infrastructure for expansion of our community. And that is the main thing, and there is, again, a seventy-five hundred dollar thing for trees tomorrow, last year, we did increase that for five thousand seventy-five hundred, that's still in there. Any questions about four-ten, four-sixteen? We're on pages twenty-three through twenty-five. Any questions? Next? Sure, yes, sir.
Online six sixty, uh, accommodation tax, it's, it's quite such a job in that.
Well, that's a great thing. So what that is, is for, um, the grants that are given out, accommodations, tax grants, that is required by the state, we'll have that coming up in May, wherever one applies to get accommodation grants, that is a percentage based off of that. So that means our accommodation revenue is increased, so we gave out more grants, that's the grant line.
It went up about, if you look at our charts later on, it's about fifty thousand dollar increase to accommodation, or one forty thousand.
So, for that, that's a, that's a good thing. Good question, I always think that one is a little bit confusing, keeping the state accommodation tax and then our local accommodation tax separate.
Anything else? Let's move on to, this is now, uh, city council and city clerk, so council isn't here, um, the majority of what we talked about is the increases here, including for staff and operational costs, so you guys are, have your salaries fixed, which is, I believe, what do you guys get, five thousand dollars and eight thousand dollars? We deduct a lot of yours, all your questions you ask. There's a lot of minuses here. We thank you for having us, that's a big cause. That's right, um, couple changes here, uh, just for you guys to be aware of, um, she stepped out, but Sharon is going to be stepping back as city clerk, after forty-three years, I think she's earned it. And I'm going to be, we're gonna be taking, well, she's staying, because I'm not letting her leave, um, we are promoting Andrea to our city clerk position, she has done well, so I'm reassigning her positions, yes, you can call. To not, to avoid losing forty-three years of institutional knowledge, I'm keeping her on special projects, um, she is gonna be, she's excited to keep working here, she doesn't want to work for stay home the wrong, so it's very exciting to have that.
Is her special project right at all?
Yes, that is exactly what she's doing.
Better get her name right.
Yeah. Couple caveats here, just, uh, I'm gonna mention this a lot, the salary increases, you will see increases in salaries, okay, across the board. The reason for there are two calls, one, the COLA that we're introducing this year, and also for some of the positions that, uh, class and confidence increases, but also, that eight, that August twenty-second meteor adjustment, or not a meteor, quarter year adjustment that we did for a three percent COLA. We had to true up the numbers, so that is in here as well, so it's really gonna be about a three percent, then a five percent, and then a COLA for class and confidence on top of that, so, that's why there's some numbers in here that increase. So, this is two positions here, and then an increase to the salaries. We did increase professional training and conferences for you guys, you guys are going to more conferences, which is great, uh, we want you guys to participate as a group, so that is reflected within it, and then also, we do have an election this year, so ten thousand dollars for elections, they're not cheap, and that's also including if we have a run on. I told the good news, you're not, you're gonna stay on. You're gonna stay on.
You wish you're not.
Fire, be hired, I have a feeling. You left on purpose, I can tell.
We really need all of council going to, and this is managing council, all of us going to the same conference every year, you know, the years would alternate, that taxpayer dollars.
So I don't think we all need, every one of them.
Well, we're all down, yeah, it's city, I mean, that's, it's nice, but that's, that's a real cost that could go for a policeman, or a fireman, or
But we got a difference in our
We do, we do, but we can't
We did talk to our senator, and, uh,
We're always all I, I just think it's a, it's a Well, this is something that can probably
And I, I will say, we have really engaged more when we go to the state with our, like, representatives, and they do notice when half the council's not there. They, they comment about
We also have the option not to, to get
Sure, it's budget, it doesn't
But you don't have to sign up.
Most city councils use this opportunity to, because you guys are a team, to work together, and do some team building, um, I think it's an excellent opportunity, again, it's up to you guys.
I think more questions than mine, um, case of my experience, that's where it comes about, I kind of makes a handy class workshop. I think, I think we owe it to our decision to do it, I mean, that choice of one is yours, so.
There also is in here for the MEO Institute, the municipal electors, too, which you guys have all taken advantage of at some point, um, that's huge, you know, these are good things to be involved in. So it is a seven thousand dollar increase to the budget, um, we have been doing it last two years consistently, you guys all done, and so it's been pretty successful.
I would say we better opt not to go, if you want them not to, but I wouldn't put that on for a
Alright, any other questions about that? Moving on. Court operations, if you could, you know, do that. Steven's got it, alright, that's Sam Waterson, everyone, okay, uh, district attorney, or law board. Alright, um, you will see a decrease in here, the only reason, because we had a deputy, uh, clerk position in there, we now shifted that to finance, you'll see a decrease to finance, the reason why is because we're cross-training all the customer service executives in as a clerk, uh, court clerk. So we no longer will have one deputy clerk assigned, they all were filling in anyway, so this just makes more sense, and this was a suggestion from staff. Again, revenues, uh, revenues, if you want to call it, are down for court times and operations, I'm okay with that, we don't use police and courts as a revenue maker, that's just how it is, it's purely doing the revenue support so well, so.
I'm just saying, we're writing the same amount of tickets.
We're writing the same amount of tickets, it's the collection part because of
That's right.
And that's, that's a solicitor question, but, uh, we're doing, I think we're still doing it. Alright, any questions about that?
Alright, Daniel, if you don't play, what percentage and exact view of the repeat offenders, I mean?
Well, it's, it's not so much the collecting, it's the courts not charging as much, um, or not even assigning any fees to things like that, so it's kind of out of our hands, but percentage wise, you can see them find their forfeiture, decrease. We go to, that's gonna be on revenue side, excuse me, but it's been about a five thousand dollar decrease for us, and we had this, and it's just been consistently going down ever since the justice bay, you know, it's ruling about, um, trials and absentia. So they banned the ability to, um, try somebody that I have court, so if they can't be tried, they can't be fined, if they can't be fined, they don't go to court.
So one thing that we do, which Brandon could speak to, is that we do, uh, we do still try and set off that, correct?
And, and even, some folks are even opting to still head to take the time in jail, honestly, uh, they get arrested, they spend a day or two in jail, and they get time served, because that's
The court system isn't, kind of, interestingly, right?
George, no better than when COVID first got sharp?
Well, we are going, we are still having more courts, but we've catch a cop back from that, it's, this is kind of a, we're writing the tickets, we're, of course, and as you guys see, we, we do have quite a bit of activity as far as writing tickets, we have two hundred, um, what was it, two hundred monthly, I was chasing up for seven? It's not so much us not doing that, it's just when it gets to the court system, that's where it kind of separates from what we used to see.
Do an increase of about twenty percent, just hanging out on Washington Street.
But we don't target areas. Yes, sir. Okay. Alright, moving on, next we have my favorite fund, city manager fund, the city manager fund, as you can see, uh, if you go back in history, that is when we added the assistant city manager, which is a fifty percent split between this and finance. Again, it true up with three percent COLA from last year, and then official COLA from next year. I did save some money if you guys decided to not get any more, so you're welcome.
Saw that.
You're welcome, yeah, uh, but that is, that apartment, any questions on that?
Yeah, well, sir, same thing, uh, line three, two, two, the professional, I said that two, I don't
And last year, I said that too, I don't think the two of y'all should go to five conferences, especially to, hopefully going to the same one. I mean, we, the city, we'd benefit more if we could spread that out. But after having gone to five last year, and that was an introduction year for Karen, do, do we really need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars? I'm asking council this, to, to do this and repeat this same process. I would ask you to scale that back by at least half, and then let them fifty people to go to, or you know, some people to go to the other two.
I do have a comment to see it, so we do budget for these again, but we don't really spend all the conferences. It depends on what we're doing with it, but that's just, again, it's budgeted, it's not actual.
And also it depends, I think a couple of years back, there was a conference in Vegas or somewhere that, that ended up in recruiting several businesses. Here that now we're...
So some of these are training conferences, some of them working conferences, and I do the assistance when I go to those conferences for working. And then also with the other train months, this is part of the training and getting information on what we need to do to better assist. So I find value in it for my employees, and that's why it's not, which is, again, it's budgeted ones. For instance, I know at least one conference, she's not being able to attend because of conferences, and they're probably in the elements. So, again, budgeted, and then I get appropriate information, so.
I do see value in the development and recruiting of businesses, as a board work.
And I do as well, because the same people are not at table.
And we do, we do the same things, but often do different sessions, especially with the, the biggest one for us is the I C N A, which is in their association. That typically involves multiple sessions across multiple days and same time sessions. And so what we do is typically for most cities, they do bring their assistants with them to go to different sessions to really split out how much we're... It's all part development, it's all for, again, the city.
I was gonna say, I C N A was unbelievable, and the thing with that one too is the networking of how valuable it is. So many city managers and assistant city managers there, and just as many assistant city managers. But there are so many sessions to go to, we have to sit down and look at the book, and we split up who's going to go to what. There's so much information at these. I do see it, it is a line that I said, Daniel, I bet, I bet.
Yeah, sure.
Sometimes it's my question that, but what I do get from that is invaluable. One of my favorites was the N A S D winter conference. It has been one of my favorites so far to go. I will be skipping out on the June one for that, for the S C C N A. And sometimes too, we do switch these up and go to economic development, things like that. These are points that we potentially go to, but if we see one that sparks our interest, it might, we might switch out and not be all at the same point.
And as you'll see in the rest of the budget, just across the world, from conferences, we have been increasing this because we want to make sure that our staffs are there to do as many conferences as possible. It's part of our training development. If you want to make them better, send them to better persons.
And we try to get back to pre-COVID. I remember in COVID, we really dropped down the training in conferences, and one goal we had is to get that back.
I think we're actually probably up to that. Any other questions about that?
It would be treated.
That's right. Any other questions? All right, moving on to the I T. So this one, this is a cost that I, we thought as far as business, but our insurance said they would drop us if we didn't mainly have cybersecurity. So it's thirty thousand dollar increase for cybersecurity requested. We did add a couple more seats to our N O A as we added more staff to the positions. But overall, as we've still going through this process of switching from the virtual online advantage to the modern online advantage. And that process has been successful so far. So we are soon getting ready to sever the connections to our old servers for some of our departments and move on to purely online, onsite server locations. So that's been a fun thing, but, yeah, that's a cybersecurity upgrade, unfortunately for us. And the N A S D said we had to do it, so we said, okay. Any questions?
Is that, is that one eighty-three?
Yes, ma'am.
And I do want to point out, if y'all look at that three-year addendum, on page six, one thing that Daniel really pushed forward, he got here, and I felt like he's done a great job. There is that increase year-over-year, which is something that we can't help with, the cybersecurity portion mainly of thirty thousand of that. But in twenty-twenty, we were paying four hundred and seventy thousand. We're still not back up to that, we're still on that three seventy-two. So to see it going, the work we've done to decrease the stuff in the area of I T that is ridiculously expensive, we've done a great job managing that cost. And I did a lot of work with B C three to get that more, to cut out things that we didn't do.
Absolutely.
Just a part of, say, if we move, flag that, please?
Yes, sir, so cybersecurity, municipal association, they've conquered B C three, and then we conquered B C twelve. This was a, if we did not get this insurance to drop us, to not cover us if it wasn't that cyber attack. Cities are being targeted more and more. And they will just grab your records and then hold them hostage, and that will be a disaster.
And they also provide some kind of service then?
They ever, what we've ever had, they ever handled our I T, in addition to other things, oh, yeah.
Yeah, if we didn't have all the requirements that N A S D said we had to have, then if we had a cyber breach, we looked at a, a whole amount of property, what it covered.
Out of pocket, the ransom. Bitcoin, that's right. Well, Bitcoins are cheap now, so that'd be good.
How the kids, um, schools, they've all been under ransom again.
And it all comes, and we have a very active monitoring program. I believe we get skin alert every single day at this point. It's, our employees are targeted, and so if they click a link and they type in a password, it's, ma'am, Amber, how are you?
Good, how are you?
What else you have?
So, what are they called?
Amber Alerts.
We call them Amber Alerts because Amber sends them out. But basically, we are targeted constantly. There, I believe, I've had emails from Mayor Hancock who wanted me to change his banking records.
Did you read that email?
I did. And I bought those gift cards he wanted, awesome, steam cards. That's right, but it's, it's constant, it's constant.
I also have from the mayor, a former mayor, and from you, Mayor Hancock.
I asked Johnny to do some whole time.
Oh, I got it.
I get them too.
Well, CFO is charged, city manager is targeted, because maybe you want to ask him again. And they make an email account, an outlet, just uses the first name. Might say Daniel Moore, but it'll be like, I like basketball, twenty-three or something, that email. Sometimes not that polite, but that's what happens. So this is extremely important. All right, moving on along. That's with the finance. Again, you see an increase of a hundred and two thousand, that is a couple of things. One, we are moving a full-time position, a customer service representative into there.
And that can't come for, so it's not a good position.
We also have the three percent for all this staff, and we'll get the five percent. Any questions about finance?
One thing I want to clarify, and we, that caveat we talked about is going to be said with each one on the, the change that you see per hour. When we did that in August, and we had it passed at city council, that will be a part of the amendment that is coming up in May to true it up. But when you look at this, this is comparing previous to. But that, that will be a part of your amendment that you'll see coming up in May. On the second day that this comes up, we'll have the first week of the amendment.
We have the operating expenditure, it was the shirt four, which is like, went down in twenty-three, three, but...
You had one, first professional services, monies that we paid, which is another challenge.
Yes, so what this is for is, this is a portion of, which this is an offset. Data Maxx is a company that we work with that collects business licenses. They go after the ones that they do not comply with obvious, and they get a fee from that. There's two ways of doing that. You can take it directly off of the business license, because they get a percentage of the business license fee, or the professional services. So this is more of an accounting switch, but we can get off of that. But it's, it's an offset of business license. There's none of these, there's none.
And you'll see a lot of times, there might be some negatives and some areas. We do every year evaluate where the money is actually being paid.
Yeah, that's good.
And so we're actively looking at it, the team looks at it all the time to see if we should really pay on this account versus another account. And so one of these departments, if it really looks like we just got it the whole thing, thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome, sir.
I didn't want to get up, ruin the presentation. So you'll see from there, okay? Any other questions? Human resources? Sharon, your best. So human resources, we do see an increase. This was a couple of things, in addition to everything I just said. I also did make spot adjustments to these, to the positions in human resources. They took back over human resources for that two hour. We had tried to split it off to the human resources solely, and that's not for hiring, but two hundred, you have to hire every summer. It turned out that human resources changed. It turns out that human resources needed to take that back over. So I did make adjustments to the increase, because they were working eighty-hour weeks to get these things done. So that's that. And we saw cost savings by eliminating position, but it increases slightly. So that's an increase for the spot adjustments, plus the three percent, plus the five percent. That's why you see the size of it. There is a decrease of forty-five thousand dollars from professional services. That's the class and comp we don't have to pay for again. So it's the budget twenty-five, and by the way, it only costs sixteen thousand, which was under brought in. Yeah. And then also, we took out the headhunter services, which we use quite successfully to hire our public services director. Even though I found you, I think, but whatever. We also took that out, so it's a forty-five thousand dollar increase, so. And there is an increase, I believe, we have some professional training conferences, we want to send legal conferences as well. Okay? Oh, yeah, that's Andrew's.
Chief Burrow was making faces too, and he quit her.
Hey, come, Chief Burrow.
That's right.
Hey, get at me.
That was a really, really good, that was the earth day, that was a really good thing. And they definitely, yeah, but, okay. Moving on to Main Street. As you know, again, we are officially reaccredited, which has been extremely, good job, Matt. That was a, we went on four agencies before, five was four, and then we, we reaccredited, we went on probationary stats before Lauren was hired, I believe so. And so Lauren worked hard to get it done, and then we brought on a brand-new team, and they were able to get along with Michelle over there, and the rest of the team too, Haley and Joel. Able to get this thing through the gates, and so we are reaccredited. This is the Matt budget, so that's Matt. So we are looking at, again, the things, but overall, we transferred a lot of expenditures to the marketing department versus Main Street, but they are kind of synonymous, but we haven't had this for Main Street purposes. Any questions about Main Street, or go back to this one? All right, next is planning zoning, this is the other one, looks like, my God, where did I do? So this was the old Business Navigator. Remember, we changed a lot of business down here in the north, we've gone back to the planning zoning department. So planning zoning is now, the function is solely planning. Part of those things that you did take out, we had budgeted last year, but I froze it for the increase in pay in August for a planning zoning director. Right now, Brenda is doing an amazing job in handling this, so we decided to keep the director position out for this year. A whole separate position, and then also that is the code position being relocated to fire. In addition for operation, it's also the reduction of the building official, which is now in fire, and also that leadership, which is now completely in fire. So that's why this department looks like it's been minus two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. It's all those things, but it's typically relocated everything.
Does Brendan not have that she can't be the manager?
We have to talk about that later. All right. This, again, that was a separate position I cut out, not the option for planning zoning director, just the position.
Okay.
The, the separate position, not the option of one.
Okay.
All right. Any questions about this? Okay. Next is police, that's where our police are, we love them. And this is where you have the classic cop and COLA, a five thousand dollar increase to our salaries and benefits. And then the capital increase of here. Couple things in here that I want to, I believe, everybody, but I love. Again, remember that we did a ten percent increase last year for sergeants and below, we did a three percent for lieutenants above, and then we did a five percent, and then we took some, and all that. So it is a sizable jump, but we're excited about the prospect of doing it in this area.
And then you'll see there will be, which is the capital.
The capital, seven three scars. And I did, oh, that's, I did want to mention this. So I mentioned it in my email, we did engage with the company about potential leasing program. We reviewed it, we did talk to our financial advisor as well, and also a lawyer about it. And we believe we can do it better ourselves. It seems to be that just as a factor of actually engaging in it, so we're having our finance people come up with the actual leasing plan. As opposed to just going and buying seven cars when we need to, we're going to start looking to replace them every year. A budget amount every single year, so it's going to be rolling, inventory going in and out. If we do that, we actually might go basically down the back end selling out cars that are still in decent shape. I've seen, go ahead.
But say, instead of paying a third party to do that, we were just setting up the financial cells and managing ourselves, and then reading the benefit on the back end.
Well, the, the main thing we noticed, and this is to Karen's credit, we noticed a lot of cities aren't doing this. A lot of counties do it because those are elected sheriffs, who like to have new things all the time. But cities seem to be able to handle it themselves, so we're going to do that option ourselves. So we will be going out a plan. This year, we decided to go ahead and just replace seven vehicles, six pursuit vehicles and one truck that can use for pursuit as well, to start replacing out those Crown Vics that are always a goodie, but they need to be gone. And so that's the plan, and then going forward, we'll start replacing these. And these are with Ford Explorers, is what they seem to like. The Tahos, between the Tahos, the Chargers and the Explorers, the police like the Charger option, except for Charger, the Explorer option.
Well, and I will credit police. Jason did come to me with the Chargers, and I was like, is it as comfortable? Is it as if they tried to get the lowest cost? And I said, y'all, we need to, we need to get something that's better for y'all. So I will credit police and fire. They always come to us with multiple options of like, here's what, like, minimum we could take, like, to go work with it, like, the media and the hot option. And I said, y'all, you need to go ahead, you know, from accidents, we've seen it for these years, I've seen that some of our people walk away when it is in a S U V. And so I feel like, let's spend it a little bit more and get away from the Chargers that's for. They, patrol lives in these cars, right? What is the most comfortable for them, that they'll be sitting in there most of the day? And so that was the decision to move towards that's for.
What's the total number of vehicles in the police department?
Jason, how many have?
Forty.
Forty vehicles, forty.
Forty.
And twenty of those are pursuits that patrol uses all the time. We have nine Crown Vics, but only six are in service, so that's going to be, we're going to be eliminating all the Crown Vics from this, in this sweep, is what our plan is. And then also the trucks are used, in addition, just as pursuit vehicles, but they're not pursuit rated like the other ones. So the plan is to start replacing out some of our aged out vehicles. S R Os may get the tail end, so we will get, patrol will get the new vehicles, and then the newer vehicles will go to S R Os, they'll drive them as much. And then, of course, our officers intend to drive them, still drive them, but don't leave them on the breaking cases as we do.
And then you have a take home, like...
We all, we, everyone who, they're all take home, and that is part of our incentive package. And actually, I just increased it from what, twenty-five miles to thirty miles? So people who live thirty miles away can take them home. We noticed that we were losing some people, so people like in Chiraw, his cops travel. That's what was happening, there are people who live here, but work in Florence. And so we do a take home.
Yeah, that was my question earlier, I didn't want, know if that's the right time to bring it up.
Sure.
Just, just to get an idea, how many city employees live within ten miles of downtown? Fifty percent, six percent?
Downtown, I'd have to do some...
I can use some downtown as a sample.
I have to do some research on it. It's, it varies.
Does forty include the scooter buggy? Does forty include the little scooter buggy?
No, sir.
So forty-one.
We have some bike stairs, so forty-one.
We did start yesterday, we have our financial advisor looking at it, which she did, I went to, and we also have Cassidy. I had her to put that out on the list surface, see how other cities are leveraging it. I did reach out to one other city I know, the city manager there, and she was like, yeah, we don't, we haven't been able to figure out a great plan yet, we just, a lot of years. We're not, we're not against the norm of what people do, but I'm trying to find a better way to rotate it for each year of that. And what we did too is I got what debt service was going to be for the next five years for these police cars versus what, what the company was going to charge us each year for the lease. We, ours was actually a little bit less.
We did keep the cars.
And I did keep the cars, so it didn't, it didn't...
And we're looking at this across the board, not just the police, but we need to look at for recreationist vehicles, public services vehicles, that all need to be part of this program. It just makes more sense to keep it. Because the main thing that we're dealing with is safety, which is a big deal, similar vehicles are older. Need backup cameras for not, you know, parts of vehicles, and those are just a lifesaver, if you guys, you know, truck backup these things. Saxis will use, and then also just efficiency with operations, because older car takes more maintenance. So it's, it's a good idea, it's something that we haven't talked about. The person that we were talking to, you guys heard, know with Natalie, Goose Creek was, we were looking at his backup twenty seventeen as well, and still have a hold, you know, they're still looking as well, so. It's a good, but what we introduce that next year, the person for next year?
How was our opinion of the V H U V?
I would love to move to that. And then also, um, a big, a big focus for us is branding and I want them all to look the same. Um, and funny enough, we, when we were talking to the company, we wanted to look at those gray vehicles, which is what they kind of are known for. Those are the hardest to get. So um, the black and, and white are the easiest to get. Um, and so we're looking at just making sure that we're all in branding as well, because that's equally important.
Thank you, Derek. We've seen that with uh, S U V versus a cop.
A lot of us have seen it firsthand.
Yeah.
Jason?
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm a firm believer in the S U Vs. I mean, there are, the Chargers do a place, um, especially the V eight Chargers. Um, some of our younger officers do love them a lot, but um, I think that the Explorers are safer in my opinion. Anything anymore here? Okay. Any questions with police?
County, school district support is at all financially with S R O.
So we have, we have, our S R O contract is currently under review. It's up until June again, and so we're gonna be looking at it. I am going to be proposing an increase because of our, they pay twenty-seven dollars a month.
We did.
They pay twenty-seven dollars a month for S R Os. It used to be about seventy-five percent of our salaries for the officers, but now it increases less. And so I know that, um, working with the county and also Wilmington, we're all interested in working together to help raise the bar a little bit. Uh, because if the county's increasing, then you know, they're looking at five percent cola too, for instance. Starting the season at five percent cola. Um, but the idea is that we wanna make sure that, uh, we're all in fair compensation and no one is kind of getting the one over the other one. We're all gonna be kind of cohesive here. I think it's called collective bargaining that the union is doing, so we'll try to do that too.
Collective?
That's right. Call it if you want. You know, I call it collective bargaining.
So we do, um, on the revenue side, we do have the school resource officer revenue that we do, that we get from the county, from the school district.
We did increase it.
Yeah, we did. And then we did that conservatively because we knew that this was going on. So I did it basically, I didn't change on it. But we also did get two thousand dollars in a footnet per officer. But that is something that we're speaking about as well. Um, Mark Blair has some things that they didn't request and so we'll try to work with that county on that. But there is a limited offset personally.
We'll look at some safety equipment for S R Os. Um, unfortunately, because of what's happening in schools, um, it's, I don't, it's kind of scary what we're investing, but it's bulletproof. Like it's a bulletproof, or like bulletproof shields you can throw out, okay, on the, in a locker on site that could be overly overburdened. So uh, it's very scary what we're having to try to do to combat the fact that there might be somebody in there.
Have we, have we explored any federal programs for equipment to sell them out?
All the time, yeah. So police and Fire do have some pretty, um, active federal programs. We are currently going after a very sizable grant for Fire right now, um, seven hundred thousand dollar grant, um, for, um, three apparatuses.
I guess it'd be a, yes.
Um, and so it's, we constantly are going after any monies we can. Um, as you know, we have now, in addition to now Philip's doing the grant team. Um, without really realizing it, we have three, three active grant runners across the city right now. We're adding grants constantly, so we're going after everything we can.
Okay. Apparently it's working.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's working. Okay?
Is it on the school board, all of that, all of them?
Councilman, that's a, that's a good conversation that you should have, though.
I would say from what I've seen.
It is not a doubt.
Yeah. Um, so, so the, the reason why we have to work with the county and the, and the other cities, especially for Durham. And you know, it's a sign of a mark because there has been a history of them going to do things like, well, the sheriff will take it over for a cheaper price. You know, that's everything. So they have in the past tried to use different agencies to leverage against the others. If we work together and all raise it up, or we ask them to cover it completely, because together at seventy-five percent or seven percent, they work. Now they're closer to probably sixty percent coverage. And the idea is because we do have the officers, we can use them for, um, you know, during the summertime, we use it for increased patrols. And whatnot, the S R Os work all year. Um, but at the end of the day, the school district is changing. We're going to year-round schedules. Um, we have a request from Butler to provide a cop, um, to them. They are a year-round schedule, so that means they need almost a hundred percent pay. Um, so it's, it's a, it's definitely a conversation that should be had. Um, I think there should be even more officers in the schools, but you know, again, with the increased pay, which is so important, we still have to be able to fill those positions. And so if we can't, if I can't fill an S R O position, I have to take someone from the street to fill it because the school takes priority. So that's where it's kind of a, it's a multiple factor thing.
So it's sixty percent of the time they spend after school in the number of months?
It used to, it was nine, it was nine.
Hundred and eighty days.
It was supposed to be, you know, three quarters of the year. So they were off of the, so it was three quarters, it's set at five percent pay. And that used to cover, it's just the increase in pay has outpaced that.
Okay, so I'm gonna need to get back to that.
That's what we're negotiating.
And then with Butler Academy, even though they're public charter, where would that money come from?
So they have to, they, so they did ask us to, they wanted to see if we could apply for a grant. So there are grants to pay for a new S R O officer for, I believe, one, some do it for three years.
Yeah, it's only a few years.
But then you have to fund it, just like a D U Y officer. And so at the end of the day, they don't have the money, in my opinion, I've seen. They're just not covered by the state, the account. Um, so they have to come up with that money apothecally or we have to pay more forward. Um, so that's why that conversation's still ongoing, but, um, as we, as I said, if an S R O is out sick or out of training, we have to cover that. So we cannot have an S R O in the school. So that's maybe something that's on patrol. And while we're very pleased to do it, in fact, I had the same conversation with Chief Thompson. I said, then you will be in the schools because it's, the schools are very important. So it's, um, it's a tough thing. Um, and I think the main thing is that we have to be together on this, truthfully. Or else it's gonna kind of get to where the plan resides.
Yeah, I agree. We've got the all on the same page. You did it valuable resorting to.
And that's a, that's a collective, that's just not my thing.
It's not only the officer in the school, it's response time if that is needed.
Absolutely.
You know, that is crucial.
The, the, um, if something happens, we're all covered.
Yeah, yeah.
There's not gonna be anything that's gonna stop a cop from coming to the school.
Right.
Um, it's just the fact that we have to make sure that, you know, I want our S R Os there protected so they protect our staff, protect the kids. Because they are the first line of defense. And as you guys know now, you don't wait for backup. You just go. Um, it's, it's a, it's a scary time we're living. So it's a very important conversation. And like I said, it's not just me thinking that we need to be all together, the city county administrator and the city manager, the docs and all are agreement. That we need to be together on this and not let anyone try. Because I mean, it's, for the school, it's kind of a business decision in addition to a safety decision. For us, it's just, it's pure safety and we have to make sure they're covered, but we have to make sure we can do all the decisions. So.
And that's something that we have not always had, but now with, um, um, how to say, new personnel changes, everybody is on the same page.
The conductor movement is, but we've engaged in conversation with this. I mean, he's a, he's a firm negotiator, but we'll, we'll do it.
Yeah.
And I think the school board, as they said in that meeting, safety is your primary concern. So let's use it.
Yeah, exactly.
They, they, I haven't, I think they'd be receptive to talking. Absolutely. They would, nothing is setting us apart. Okay?
I have one other question. I wanted to ask about the, um, C D Y surveillance schemes.
Yes. Okay. So that project, as you guys know, we funded that last year. Uh, fifty percent, it's already been funded, right?
It's currently here.
Current, let's, this, this is our, this will be, fifty percent's already been paid. They are currently installing cameras that were the easier ones to install uh, throughout the different departments and buildings. So that's ongoing right now. The main thing we're trying to do is still hammering out negotiation with Duke and of course, uh, D O T to make sure that the cameras up. But that project is ongoing. I just do anticipate it being closed out, um, within the next few months. So it's exciting. Those cameras would be a place, go into effect for multiple reasons. It's very, as we all talked about, but the cameras are a key factor, are a important factor right now. It's a five hundred thousand dollar investment for safety.
Are you know, the new camera that we use as additional to the power car?
Yes, yeah, right. Um, we've had quite a number of businesses prior to the park and the cameras need to be part of that. It's gonna be, we're, I'm looking at adding additional cameras, but then also the monitoring system is where it's so crucial that it helps identify things happen. We, we, we're having a lot of just small issues or missed the meter issues for the most part, but destruction of the bathroom is, is not good. And the parks and the safety area.
And the fact that, it's probably known that cameras do not work.
Right, well, and the cameras, you know, for instance, like on Bell Avenue and down A Street, there's solar power and there's trees that are blocking, you see on a cloudy day, which we're pretty known for around here. It don't work. And so these, none of these will be solar powered. They'll all be hooked up to their own internal power source. And all be living together, that if you watch, in one place.
Okay, that's one thing, um, down there. That's why it's a concrete jungle.
Yeah.
And, you know, they, they have to work very slow if they work at all.
Sure.
Because there's been one, two, actually two murders down there. Um, and it's just not exactly.
So I mean, the main thing for us is, um, we have a camera system, another D P scanner, we're in France. This is a complete new system that then we will, at the main, it's the same token we have to maintain. And so it's a commitment. And you know, I'm, I'm very pleased you guys were interested in doing five hundred thousand dollar program. Okay? But when we do have those cameras, there will be a digital unveiling.
I'm excited, Jason.
Digital ribbon cutting, by, by the check, but we'll see.
I don't need it, but I'm gonna be able to work.
Oh, no, you're, you're gonna be there, don't you worry. All right, next is Fire.
I'll do that for us. I'm waiting after Fire. I hope there's three or four pages left in, on the section, but maybe after Fire.
That's fine. All right, so Fire, um, again, they have the increase to salaries. They were also benefited from the class compensation study. Um, we do have some new equipment in there. Um, but the sizable increase to operating expenses, again, a building official, sixty-two thousand dollars for a building official. And then also fifty thousand dollars for demolition. So we do, that was added just by the, um, and then we do have some several equipment requests in there. If you go to page, if you go to page sixty-seven, no, that's making it's not, sorry, sixty-eight. Um, one of these, just for you, uh, reference to extrication tools, we are trying to go after fire program for that. It's forty-one thousand dollars, but we are really covered, we can. Um, and then the biggest thing, of course, is the fifty-five percent of that fire truck, which, uh, I believe is actually headed scheduled. Um, they quoted us twenty-three months to build. We ordered it, what, eight months ago or less than that?
Yes, yes, we're around that. It's supposed to be, hopefully we have it by the end of the year.
Now we're gonna have it, it's supposed to be here by June, next twenty twenty-four, five, four.
Four.
Four. So now it's gonna be here again, um, December.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood. So we're excited. So we want to get that as soon as possible.
We can only cover the red.
All right, even the red.
Yeah, all right, even the red. That's right. Just white, so it ain't gonna ruin it. That's it. And I'm pushing.
We were talking about that as Jeff's new take on vehicles.
Now you saying by yourself, Dave.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I did. Just need to take a shoot.
All right. Okay, and also an increase was an increase in adding codes to the salaries as well. So code function. Okay.
So James, that's one of the quick, um, are we doing them free?
Yes.
Full-time, part-time, contract.
It's contracted, so we still are using SafeBuild and, um, we, we're moving it from the, you know, planning zoning over to codes issues. They're able to, we're, we're seeing a very good increase in productivity coming from that. The main things that we listen to, of course, when we talk about availability. So anytime someone needs something, we have now increased availability for a building official. And also just making sure that it's consistent. Um, because I have, you know, I've heard from many of the businesses and, um, I took their feedback to heart. And, um, they work for us. So that's the bottom line. So, uh, we have been steadily but surely improving that relationship contract. Uh, but it is, we have still discovered that the contract is better. Building official is one of those positions that if you look at the trends in local governments, is one of those positions that is going away in terms of availability for people. A person has to get four licenses to be a building official and go stop an electrical or plumbing because they can make a killing as a private business. And so those positions are just gonna become more and more related to contract services, they're a little certain pieces.
That, that's why I brought that up.
But it is a contract position, but, um, I believe Jeff has done a fantastic job and Myron, uh, Fire Marshal managing that contract and really, really amping up our engagement with the building official.
Yeah, that, that's why I brought that up too.
Yeah. So it's, it's actually, it's doing great. I'm, I think you're seeing an increase as well.
It's on the way to warrant to go there, coming up.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, uh, first, we finally take it to bridge, you like it?